... and adjudication is hereby called to order the Chairman, Senator Vice Speaker, B.J. Cruz has asked me to chair temporarily as we discuss the measure that is before this particular body. We will take a five-minute recess and invite the representatives from the Attorney General's Office, as well as Department of Corrections and any other individuals that were invited by the sponsor of the legislation to join us up front. But we will, the rules of engagement will be, I will open up initially with allowing the sponsor, I know he did this previously, but allowing the sponsors some general comments and perhaps any questions that he would like to pose to the panel members. And then upon his conclusion, we will go ahead and allow the panel members to provide some comments, opening comments and statements. And then I will open the floor to general comments from the body for five minutes. Subsequent to that, we will break it down because there was a request for bifurcation of this process in terms of section-by-section analysis. We will break it down, section by section, in terms of discussing and proposing any changes, amendments, or deletions. Okay? So that would be the rules of engagement. But prior to the bifurcation process of this proposal, all questions should be posed to the panel members and then we will ask them to leave the room as we go section by section because that's really more or less a discussion deliberation by the body as a whole. Okay? Any questions with regards to the rules of engagement? Right now, present in the, on the floor is Speaker Wampad, Vice Speaker Cruz, Senator Underwood, Senator Tom Ada, Senator Tony Ada, Senator Frank Blas Jr., Senator Mary Camacho Torres, and I understand our, our other colleagues are in transit right now at this point in time to join us. So we will take a five-minute recess and Sergeant Oms, please if you can invite the, our invited guests. Thank you.
The need of manpower. So, again, I would ask that let the DOC settlement agreement working group, medical working group, continue to work toward identifying areas that we need to correct so that we could comply with those mandates. And I could say that it appears that we will be coming to this body to request for more funding, if you may, once a medical plan has been put together identifying, in reality, the manpower that we need in order to meet all those mandates that has been placed on this agency. So, that is all I have. And again, I would like to say thank you very much for taking an aggressive approach into helping DOC comply.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sinagacy. Vice Speaker Cruz?
General and Mr. Director, you both understand that the vacancy pool, as it was initially passed by this body last August, gave the governor the authority to be able to hire whatever personnel is necessary in public safety. So, that authority has already been there. So, any personnel that the DOC needs to hire to comply with this court order, you can use that vacancy pool. This bill only gives another exception. It authorizes the governor to use the vacancy pool to also pick up consultants if it's necessary, to pay for things that we hadn't thought about, the formulary, the purchase of pharmaceuticals. And also, I understand, Mr. Director, that DOI has given you three million, four, I mean, three hundred thousand for a locking system. And I understand that the working group has had someone to look at the prison to comply just with the court order for the locking system for the four units. And you may have an amount that is necessary. This bill was intended to be able to have you issue the RFP for whatever, one million, one million five, one million six, one eight, whatever the amount is. You can get the RFP out so you can get the locking system RFP out and hopefully installed before the 30th or the 15th of September so we can comply with the court order. So, I've tried to be as flexible with this. And the amendment in Section One just adds a new authorization for the use of the vacancy pool. It's not just for Zero One for personnel. It's now going to be for Zero Three, whatever.
All categories.
All categories, whatever you need to be able to comply with this court order. And the only thing that, the only protection that I've tried to put in here was to insist, or at least to write into this legislation, that in order for any funds to be expended from the vacancy pool, the Attorney General has to certify that this is, in fact, for the sole purpose of complying with the court order. And I don't want to preempt any of my colleagues, but there was some question as to whether or not that would pose any problems to the continued representation of the Attorney General's office. And so, if you can address that, General, or just, also, if you can just address the order. I know at the public hearing, you spoke about the thirty-five provisions in there and the fact that thirty-four of them were for medical and other needs, and only one was for infrastructure. And that the entire January fifteenth order, nowhere in there is there a requirement or a statement or an order that we completely rebuild the prison. And so, I'd like for you to address that, to just talk about the order, General, so that the body understands what it is that you're having to comply with and how you've put together your folder with everything, the different things that you have there.
Well, I think it was my tenth day, or maybe it was my sixth day in office. I was given a copy of the order from the judge, and I knew it was coming up. I didn't realize that Judge Munson was actually going to sign it on the sixteenth. Nonetheless, I reviewed it, and I think on first glance, there are thirty-five provisions here. And I think anyone, I hope Senators that you have a copy of it, anyone who looks at this, you become overwhelmed by it. And I'm an attorney, and I was overwhelmed by it. But then I started breaking it down inch by inch, section by section, section by section, realized that quite a few of the sections overlapped. Ninety percent of the order addresses a medical health plan for our prison system here on Guam. Small ten percent, or fifteen percent, is the fiscal plan of DOC. So, this Vice Speaker is correct. This does not address, do we build a new prison? That ten percent is in reference to the locking systems for four units, Unit Five, Unit Six, Unit Seven, and Unit Seventeen up at the Department of Corrections. And I think what struck me in the order, it said repair. Oh, I like the word repair, because that sounds a little cheaper to me than to build. So, we decided then, I decided then, the only way that anything as massive as this can ever work is for me to join forces with the governor. And the Lieutenant Governor approached me on this and said, Liz, let's do it together. And I said, that's the only way it can work. I don't operate the executive branch, and I don't have control over the huge and vast resources that the governor has to get this done. So, I knew it was appropriate for the Attorney General's office to work in cooperation and tandem with the governor's office. We then formed the working group. I made these binders and thirty-five tabs, thirty-five tabs. And in the tabs, we decided to do it one by one and sit down in the working group one by one. Our first meeting, it was clear that we should bifurcate the working group between medical and medical health, dental and mental health, and the facility, the locking systems. So, we have a subcommittee, a working group, that meets every Friday at ten o'clock at the Department of Corrections, and that addresses the locking systems and any other infrastructure or facilities structure that is necessary to make sure that a medical plan is workable, such as renovating the infirmary up there. But the great bulk of the facilities working group is addressing the locking system, that I said I'd come back twenty years ago, and we still have a locking system problem. The larger and more difficult working group meets every Monday at four P.M. at Adalou, and that's the working group that deals with mental health, dental health, and overall medical health of inmates and detainees. And, well, first of all, the Friday group is made up of Department of Public Works, the University of Guam now, because we found a certified mechanical engineer there. But it's predominantly DOC, Public Works, of course, our office, GSA, and I think that's predominantly the working group for Friday. Monday's working group, Guam Behavioral Health, Department of Public Health and Social Services, Guam Memorial Hospital, the Guam Fire Department, GSA again. I think those are the primary groups. And of course, Senators, you're always welcome to come to any of those. Senator Uggan sends his staff regularly. I can tell you that February sixteenth, the clock started to tick. But the good news, we were three weeks ahead of that clock. So, an example of one portion of the order, the shortest requirements under the order are thirty days, and there are only three of those. The Department of Corrections has to develop policies and procedures for a formulary. Some of you who are familiar in the medical field, I didn't know what a formulary was. It's a list of medicines, both non-psychootropic, which is Bayer aspirin, et cetera, and the psychotropic medications that are predominantly purchased by Guam Behavioral because they are DEA-controlled. I can let you know, it looks like we've accomplished that one, and because we were ahead of the game on that one. The third of the thirty-day, the shortest of the thirty-day requirements is to develop a health records format. And we're close to adopting the electronic health record system that the Department of Public Health and Social Services has developed in the last three years, that is, all electronic health records currently. And the Director will let you know that everything is manual right now at DOC. So, I think that was a great, when Lyndon De Norrisi said, oh, we developed one at Public Health, would you like to use it? That was brilliant. One more thing about the formulary, another important part of the formulary is not just having a list of medications, psychotropic and non-psychootropic, but how do you purchase that? And so, this bill is going to be very instrumental in the Department of Corrections buying medicine at a lower cost. And we've been able to discover that, yes, DOC has an existing contract where a pill can cost a thousand times more than if we did it, than we purchased otherwise. And so, both Guam Memorial Hospital, Department of Public Health and Social Services, and GSA has strongly recommended, and the Director has agreed, that whatever medication DOC needs, let's purchase it through this blanket, this blanket procurement that both Public Health or Guam Memorial Hospital or Guam Behavioral has to exactly just reduce the cost down to, well, save the government a lot of money. So, I mentioned about the health records, and just let me give you the last one. And everything else, ladies and gentlemen, is sixty days, ninety days, one hundred and twenty days, and then all the way to September thirtieth. The last one is the informed consent. It's exactly what we all sign when we go to a clinic. Who are you? What are you? What are your diseases? And what are your ailments? What are you allergic to? And so, the Department of Corrections, again, on this one, is close to resolving that. And this is something that is a question that the Director, and not just the medical staff, but the correctional staff, have to work in tandem so that when a person comes in as a detainee, when he's arrested, a person is adjudged and convicted and goes to prison as an inmate, we have informed consent. So, when you break it down inch by inch, it's almost not as overwhelming as I thought it was going to be. But make no mistake about it, it's a lot of hard work and time. But I want to let the Senators know that we have such tremendous resources within the government of Guam. And I'll let Fred talk about the facilities, if you want to know about the locking system. And so, when you meet every week, it sounds like a lot of work, but it's amazing the suggestions that come up from the Guam Fire Department, from Captain Burrier, from Claudia Foggie down at GSA, from Lyndon De Norrisi and her staff at Guam Department of Public Health, and Ray Vega at Guam Behavioral. We can do this. We can absolutely do this as long as we work cooperatively together. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you very much, General Barrett Anderson. Vice Speaker Cruz has the floor, so if we can allow. Are you done? Okay, if we can hear from Attorney Fred?
If I could just talk about the locking systems and then...
Senator Torres, I will recommend you. Anyone else that would like to pose any questions or comments, please signify by raising your hand. Okay? Senator DeCher?
Thank you very much. Mr. Vice Speaker, you also asked about if there would be any problem with the concurrence, I believe was the issue that you had asked about. Senator, to address that issue, even currently under the procurement protest law, if the governor felt that there was a substantial need to proceed, if there was a protest in place, that would require the concurrence of the AG. So, it's not unprecedented for the AG to concur for a matter that's in current litigation to resolve that problem. With regard to the locking system, it did look like it would be an easy fix for at least one of the unit, but thanks to Dr. Underwood from the University of Guam, he allowed us to use Sonny Perez, who's an engineer, and he came through. And what seemed to, like myself, for example, as an easy fix, became a lot more complex. And we realized that it wasn't such a good idea to maybe just do a patchwork. And he explained things and used terms that I haven't heard, well, basically since the Department of Education. He said, look, this is a system you want to standardize. And so, you don't want to patch this one and have a different system than the unit right next door, because if it was an emergency, the guards would be pulling a switch this one, but tapping a computer on that one. He said, this is something standardized, Fred. He said, for the citizens of Guam, you got to ensure safety, because if we get it wrong, people are going to get hurt or die. I mean, that's how simple he put it. And so, with that being said, we actually, in fact, right now, we're supposed to meet with the group to retool the specifications. Dominic Munia may be on his way right now, but the gist of it, before Sonny gave his input, we were looking at a one point six, one million point six, a figure for the electronic locking systems. And that's without the bells and whistles. I believe the Director came earlier and had testified that there was a six million dollar figure. We've gone through that original bid, and we've knocked out things like, for example, the closed-circuit television, the fact that it would connect to Agania, Mungila, and so forth like that. We kept the closed-circuit television as an option. So, in other words, if the Director decided at a certain point, because closed circuit is very valuable, the guards that, as we went inside, explained how valuable that a closed circuit, you know, especially if there's a situation where one guard gets pulled away, leaving only two guards left in the cage, sort of say, that they would like that. So, what we did was, instead of adding it to the bid, we used it only as an option. So, we'll get the basic system. This is how much more it'll cost if you add on a closed-circuit television system. That would be valuable. At that point, it would be up to the Director, and certainly, he may have to come back here. But the nutshell is, we're looking at a very aggressive procurement schedule. Certainly, Mr. Vice Chair, this bill would help us, because what I've come to realize, and this is only meeting with Mr. Perez two times, is we may need some expertise. We don't have the luxury of going out and doing an RFP to bid this out. We may have to do the best we can to look around and who's available that can meet our needs. So, that's why we've asked for the sole source strictly to meet this court order.
Thank you very much, Attorney Nishihara. Senator Torres, you're recognized.
I just had a point of clarification from General Barrett Anderson. When you were talking about Section Four of the bill with regard to the procurement of medicines, you mentioned a blanket arrangement, sort of a volume discount type of concept. But as I'm reading this, and that was one of the original questions that I had when I was looking at this thing, although it grants authority for sole-source procurement, and it also has a provision that the price must meet a certain threshold, it must be twenty percent below the cost that would be incurred for GMH to procure similar things. I just want clarification from you. Are we looking at only one mechanism for the procurement of medicine? Or are you just, is this just intended to fast-track to meet that deadline, but it is not part of the overall plan for the, for providing for, providing for a pharmaceutical source at the prison?
The working group has not yet finalized which of the various options is the most cost-effective for DOC. This is yet another option. So, the law, it's always nice when you have a law that indicates how the legislature would like the territory of the government to proceed. And so, this is a, must not be more than twenty percent, not more than twenty percent less than the cost of GMH. However, if GMH has an existing far better procurement process for medicine, or GSA has that, or Public Health has that, then we're definitely going to take the most cost-effective. And what it means is that pool of money, that pool of money that's in the bill, would allow DOC to draw on that, the ASO, to be able to work with GSA and to get those medicines promptly. Go ahead.
Yes, Senator Torres. The reason why that was also put in there is, as the AG explained, that this is an industry-wide. And so, I've actually had the opportunity to meet with Attorney Generals from other offices, Assistant Attorney Generals from other states, I should say, as well as I've been able to meet with some of their facility directors, because I happened to be off-island, and they were able to hook me up with other people. What I've discovered are there are companies that will not submit a bid, for example, to Guam, that service prison industries or jails. And the interesting thing, and there was a doctor who explained this to me, is to save funds, what they would do is, instead of dispensing medication in a regular bottle that you would see, they actually do it via bubble sheet with thirty capsules in there. And instead of needing a nurse to dispense it, they could have a guard do it, because it's just like you at home. You'd open the bottle. Now, this is for the non-narcotic drugs, you know, your high blood pressure, diabetes. But the amount of savings, because it could be done that way, we use that twenty percent peg as one of the options, that if we're able to, and I haven't spoken to the pharmaceutical company or companies, so I don't know what the price savings would be. But we figured it has to be cheaper than twenty percent of what government of Guam pays at the best, you know? That just happens to be a number. But to give you an idea, currently, the Department of Corrections is expending over a hundred thousand dollars a month. So, if saving twenty percent would mean twenty thousand a month, and you add up, you know, those tens of thousands, and pretty soon, you're saving a lot of money. So, that was one of the reasons we requested for that to be an option. We're not saying it will be, but just like the AG said, it's an option, yes.
Senator Torres, you still have the floor? Any other questions to the panel members? Okay. Thank you, Senator Torres. I do have Senator Frank Blas Jr., Senator Tom Addus, Senator Dennis Rodriguez. So, if there's any other Senators that would like to pose questions to the panel members, please signify by raising your hand. Senator Frank Blas Jr., you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Madam General, and Mr. Director. Thank you very much for coming down. Madam General, in your initial testimony or presentation, you referred to DOC as your client. Right? Okay. And along those lines, an issue that I had, a concern that I had with, is regard to, I guess, Section Three. Do you have the bill in front of you? Okay. And actually, on page two, starting right, line one to line, line two and three, that the Attorney General of Guam must review and concur in writing that such transfer, okay? That action in itself, in your opinion, or your, do you, is, could that action, or could that activity place you in a position where you become now a party to the suit? And that you would have to answer to, or...
How so, Senator?
Providing testimony.
How so?
Well, before the, before the appropriations, before the money can be spent, you would need to, it would need your permission. Review and concur. Well, yeah, you concur and permission, two different things, but then it could be construed as permission. Well, that in itself, if it came an issue with regards to the dispensation of the funds, could that conceivably make you a party to the suit and limit your ability to be able to provide counsel or...
Well, Senator, I'm just going to tell you, that's not going to happen. I represent the government, I represent the government through the governor, and representing the governor and the government, I represent the people in that manner. I, you know, it's hard for me to answer your question, because I don't envision it happening. I've started off my tenure, and I, with the governor and the governor's office and the Guam Legislature, and I hope that my tenure in the next four years continues to be cooperative. And so, that's what I'm saying. I don't see the conflict of interest that, Senator, and with all due respect, I'm trying to, and that's why I said, how so? I can just assure you this, that the statute is very clear, that any expenditure that is needed under this transfer authority needs to be for this court order. And so far, every effort of the executive branch and the working group has been to accept my guidance and to make sure we go through with this. I don't anticipate, and I'll tell you, Senator, if there are any rocky roads, I'm going to resolve them. I don't want to end up in a conflict with my client.
And I don't see, it's not so mad of the conflict that I'm worried about, and I appreciate that, and I, you know, and I'm just as optimistic as you are. I don't see a conflict between you and your client. It's the point that you may be a party as a result of having to testify that you did, that was the process, and you had, you had to provide the concurrence, or you had to provide the review, in essence, provide the permission to be able to do that.
And you're suggesting that that makes me a party?
I'm asking if that would, if that in fact would make you a party, and if it did...
I'm having a hard time seeing it as, as it making, as making, making a party. And who would be objecting to this, though?
Again, I, you know, like you, I don't have the crystal ball with regards to how far and where it would be. I'm just trying to, I'm just recalling, I'm going to go back to my days in law enforcement. And I remember a number of the times that we would have to go out and do the, you know, the investigations preliminary prior to the trial. And there were some actions that we took that we would, as much as we'd like the attorney to be present with us, the advice was not so, not to do so, because then they become a witness or a party to the action.
I'm going to say no, Senator. And let me tell you why. I have to approve every contract that goes through the government of Guam every day. Every day, I'm signing a contract. Does that make me a party if, I believe, somehow, if something goes wrong with that contract? I can distinguish my administrative role from my legal role, and I don't know if that gives you any comfort.
Well, no, it's not so much my comfort, it's your comfort.
I'm comfortable, I'm very comfortable.
Okay?
I'm comfortable with the bill. Absolutely comfortable with the bill.
If you can do this, I just want to make sure that it can.
I am, I have no problem with it.
If you're comfortable with it, I'm comfortable with it. Because eventually, you're the one that's going to have to do it.
We're good.
Okay?
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Blas. Senator Tom Addus.
Thank you. General Anderson, I, you know, I have some, excuse me, I have some concerns on Sections Three and Four, and this idea of, you know, being able to procure things on a sole-source basis, to basically just get rid of the middleman and go directly to the manufacturer, whatever. It just seems rather contradictory that, on the one hand, you were emphasizing earlier about, you know, trying to be as economically efficient, getting the most that we can for the limited resources. And I'm not convinced that, you know, to even, to even consider sole source is going to be the cheaper way to go, you know, without, I kind of get the impression that, never mind, they at least get three quotes, just go find somebody who's willing to do it. And so, I do have some concerns with that. And also, I do have some concerns with, you know, going directly to the distributor and basically just, never mind the local middleman, because then, now, when something goes wrong, we have to do this telephonically, you know, that coordination. So, I just want to raise that concern. And the same thing with, you know, the procurement of consultants and expert witness on a sole source, again, without, because it seems that, for example, for the medicines, if we're going to go directly to a manufacturer, we would have already put together the specs of what we want, when we want it, how we want it, and all that stuff. So, maybe for a couple of weeks more, to take the time to get quotations, then maybe, you know, it wouldn't take that much longer. So, it just kind of makes me a little bit uncomfortable when we talk about, we're going to go out and we're going to sole source. The other concern that I have is on page two, and that was on Section One. The other concern that I have is on page two, and that was on Section One, yeah, Section One. The, it, the bill prohibits your, no appropriation shall be used for the expenditure of private legal counsel. And I thought I heard you earlier that you may not have the expertise in-house?
Not dealing with legal expertise, but dealing with professional expertise in the medical health arena.
Oh, I see. Okay. So I guess maybe the way to, maybe the way to interpret this is you would not be able to hire like a role at Montanoya then? Okay.
No, no, our, the Attorney General's office will handle all litigation.
Okay, fine. All right. That's all I have. Just, I just wanted to express my concern on Sections Three and Four. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Adda. And we're putting a call to GSA Representative Ms. Claudia Akvaji, who's been an active participant in this entire process, so hopefully she can be able to respond also to your inquiry. Senator Rodriguez, and then Senator Respecho.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, General, Attorney Director, Deputy Director. I don't know, I came in while we started already, and I don't know if a figure was given in terms of what you expect the cost to be, the total cost to be to comply with this court order. Was that given already, a total?
Senator, I think you're requesting for me to respond? No, at this point, no. We are still awaiting some medical plan to be put together. Therefore, we can then determine really the manpower that we need and what the cost will be. But I could respond that for the electronic locking, for the four units, which is five, six, seven, and seventeen, roughly, it's around 1.6 mil for the electronic locking.
Okay. And I think that's why I caught the other discussions about what Fred was talking about, about the cost and maybe bring it down, taking out the CCTV portion. So my concern here is that, well, first of all, I definitely agree that, you know, we must do everything to comply with this order, and I congratulate you guys for, you know, moving in that direction, especially with the General being right there in the driver's seat, and we spoke about this. My concern is that with this bill, we're really giving a blank check. This vacancy cost pool that this body had passed and incorporated into the budget was meant for law enforcement, was meant to hire an additional hundred-five law enforcement officers, was meant to bring in over thirty additional support staff, and also was meant to fund overtime for DOC officers and GPD officers. And so, you know, although I wholeheartedly agree with intent and what we need to do to comply with the order, my concern is that we don't know, you know, what the cost is going to be. So this bill, initially, when it was first introduced, we was very clear. It was 500,000 that was going to be set aside from this cost pool to take care of what needs to be done. And so with this now, it's really a blank check. And so we don't know what, how much is going to be used for this. And so that's my one concern. The other concern I have here is Section Four, where the language here, the way it's stated here, and I know other, my other colleagues had expressed, had discussed this section about the language that says, provided the total cost savings must be more than twenty percent less than the cost paid by GMH. And I understand that, you know, there may be other ways that you're looking at procuring these medications, but that's not what, if we don't do anything with this language, this language says, you know, you are, you know, funds could be used to procure medication on sole source basis, provided, provided that is twenty percent less than GMH. And I'm not too sure if we want to do that, because as we know, we're buying, GMH is buying medications that are much higher than what they should be. The only reason why is because, you know, we're always behind in our payments to vendors, and so vendors put that, put maybe a twenty percent or even more, a padding, just so to ensure that they can afford to wait six, twelve months to be paid. And so I don't know if we're making amendments now, but that's something that I would like to just put out there, that that may have to be revisited if we're saying that we're doing it this way. Another way also is to perhaps have GMH procure these medications, or the community health centers. Linda DiNorsi, I heard her name, she's part of the working group, they have an efficient way of procuring some medications there. So these are some of the stuff that, you know, I want to just listen more on the discussions and see what, you know, what comes off it, and then from there, we'll come up with any amendments that need to be done.
Senator, I'm kind of wondering if, I'm certainly not on the floor anymore, but you're trying to suggest that there at least be a cost saving that is the most cost-effective means of going about doing that. Your concern is perhaps a twenty percent less than GMH is perhaps not the most cost-effective? Is that your concern?
Yes, that's right.
Thank you very much, Senator Rodriguez. I do have Senator Respecho next, and then Senator S. Nicholas, and then Senator McCreedy. Senator Respecho, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and to General Barrett Anderson. Good afternoon, and Director and Deputy Director. General, I want to go back to a comment that you made earlier, and I just want to generate some discussion, where you said that if you don't approve a government contract, it doesn't happen. Well, I certainly agree with that statement, because the Attorney General of Guam always signs these contracts, but my understanding is they approve, they approve the contract to form.
Yeah.
And so I want to generate some of your own thinking with how you would approach this process, because when we had our first elected Attorney General, we saw the issuance of a bond stop completely, because the first elected Attorney General took the position that the government should not be issuing those bonds, if you recall, and also refused to sign that particular certification. And so I understand that you can stop a contract if the contract is not deformed, if the dates are wrong, if the amounts are wrong, but can you please elaborate further on what you meant, that if you approve something, if you don't sign the contract, it doesn't get approved?
Well, actually, let me clarify, even when I was an appointed AG, I, on one very clear occasion, I can't remember the topic, but I didn't approve it as deformed. Nonetheless, my boss, the governor, signed it. So approval as deformed is a very limited review. If I see a contract that I do not believe as deformed is appropriate, I won't sign it. I'll send it on to the governor, indicate my concerns about not signing it. Ultimately, it's up to the governor to sign it or not sign it. As to legality, though, that's a different issue. As to legality, then I would very strongly advise the governor, first, I'm not signing it, and Governor, on behalf of the territory, you cannot sign it, it would not be legal. If it is then signed, and the governor and I will just find ourselves in court very, very fast. So, does that clarify?
Yeah, but there's a distinction between approving as deformed and trying to take legality and try to take a policy stance on whatever the governor wanted to do.
Oh, I try not to take the policy stand, I try to take the legal stand on the issue.
And so over the years, General, we've also received a lot of pushback regarding the separation of powers doctrine, regarding infringing on executive authority. And so, to be clear, on page two, line two, where it says must review and concur in writing, if the governor is your client, and knowing that the governor's organic act authority is the cash management of this government, do you believe that this legislation, if it's statute, is putting you in a very, very difficult situation statutorily? Whereas if the governor believes that this expenditure is pursuant to satisfy this court order, and you don't concur, which, who prevails in that case?
Senator, if you would allow me to defer to the sponsor of the bill, who has suggested that the Attorney General's office be in the approval process, if you want me in the approval process, I will. If you don't want me in the approval process, that's fine as well. I certainly respect the Vice Speaker's concerns here, but perhaps the Vice Speaker could express the language here as to why it's in there.
Before he does that and tries to upstage me, which he always does, I don't have a problem with that, he certainly earns that right, and I respect him wholeheartedly. But General, I respect you as well, and for me, it's not a matter of including you in the process or not including you in the process. Do you think that there's, and I don't mean to put you in a spot, Madam, and if you want me to go move forward, I will.
No, I'm just trying to understand what the question is clearly.
I think this puts you in a very precarious situation, where I understand a review in writing, where you would state whether or not this will comply with that order, but to require that, in order for that transfer to be made, that you have to concur, might infringe on executive authority or executive powers. And I just want to raise that as an issue with Section One before I move to other sections.
I have to say, Senator, I perhaps don't see it as much of a problematic issue as perhaps yourself and some of the other senators do. I think that's the only way I can answer that.
Okay, and that would be something that you would have to take up with your client?
Absolutely.
Okay. On the next issue regarding the twenty percent cost savings, and I agree with Senator Adda, where cheaper's not always better, and we've seen how the procurement system is set up, where you have to go more than likely with the lowest bidder, and although the quality may not be as such, where we get the better, better product. This twenty percent savings threshold, that should be lower than what GMH pays, I mean, if I were watching this session on television, my question would be, couldn't we get the same twenty percent discount for the Guaman Mora Hospital? I mean, if you can find some source that has pharmaceuticals for twenty percent less than what GMH is paying, for Christ's sake, we're one government, right? And so this, this thing just jumps out at me so clearly, where because we're under general order, we should try to find ways to save money to comply with the order, but do we need an order to tell us that we should also be looking for these kind of savings for the Guaman Mora Hospital and in this particular case? So that's all I have for now, and thank you for clarifying my concerns with, you know, with the executive authority.
Thank you very much, Senator Respecho. Just for the information of the body, Ms. Claudia Akvaji from GSA is on her way, she's in transit, as well as Mr. Dominic Munya.
He is, Dominic is here.
Or Dominic Munya, I take it, is in the public hearing room. So if there's no objection from members of the body, I would like to invite Mr. Dominic Munya after he is sworn in by the Sergeant-at-Arms in the public hearing room, invite him up here to join us if by any chance there's any questions that will be directed to him. But we do have Senators S. Nicholas, Vice Speaker Cruz, unless you want to, you to the other senators, Senators S. Nicholas, and then Senator McCreedy, and Speaker Wapak. Senator Nicholas, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just kind of wanted to bring things back to the whole reason why we're here and the reason why we're discussing Bill Twenty-two dash thirty-three, where we're facing a court order, and we're facing a deadline. And so the reason why we have this bill is to, one, provide for the funding necessary to comply with that court order, and, two, provide the operational flexibility to this government for us to be able to meet those deadlines, given the fact that our history of meeting timelines that narrow isn't very good. We're trying to create as many flexibility opportunities as possible for us to be able to comply. So I'm pretty comfortable with the bill overall. Based on some of the dialogue we've had, though, I did want to kind of call everyone's attention to page three. And I'm wondering, because the subject that we're talking about with respect to sole source, sole sourcing, any procurements, I think if we do a little tweaking on the language, we can build it out in a way that's going to be comfortable for everybody. So for example, on page three, line one, we have a comma after the word basis, sole source basis, I'm thinking of moving that comma to after the word necessary. So instead, it'll be on a sole source basis as necessary, and that will provide the working group the flexibility to sole source if they think it's in the best interest of meeting those deadlines, or to not sole source if they think that, you know, working with the current system is in the best interest of the operation. The other suggestion will also be similar on line eight, after the word sole source basis, include the words as necessary, comma. That way, this bill would not be requiring us to sole source, but it will definitely give you the flexibility to be able to do that. And if anybody has any issues of those two, those are amendments that I'm considering proffering on the bill.
Senator, may I ask, then, as sole source as necessary, with the focus that we procure the least expensive, but not at the risk of quality of medication? Is that what you're hoping for?
Well, I would, I would assume that any kind of procurement, whether it's sole source or general procurement, we would still have those quality standards in place, right? So unless you'd like to have additional language added there, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't know how to mandate quality, you know, so, yeah.
Probably quality.
But my whole intent, the whole purpose of what I'm talking about is to just give you guys and the working group the flexibility to either go with the standard operating procedure or to go sole source as necessary based on pretty much a judgment call from the working group's side, if the working group is comfortable with that.
Senator S. Nicholas, I just want to thank you very much for at least proffering the idea we will entertain any amendment subsequent to the departure of the members of the panel, but you sharing it with the members of the panel and making sure that we get their concurrence obviously is very helpful in the process, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to ask also the opinion of the panel, if they had any concerns with respect to the reporting requirements, only because sometimes, you know, having to compile these reports in the middle of having to, you know, push out the next objective, it can, it can become cumbersome. Are these reporting requirements going to get in the way of us being able to meet the deadline at all?
Senator, whatever reporting requirements the legislature would like us to meet, we'll meet those deadlines.
Okay. That's all, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, also, there might be situations, however, hopefully there are very few, if a court requires a report under seal, so that would be the only limitation then.
Thank you very much, Senator S. Nicholas, and General Barrett Anderson. Senator McCreedy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the panel for coming here today. I first want to congratulate and thank General Elizabeth Barrett Anderson for her steadfast approach and leading this charge. I think it's something that we have to stop building more tunnels when the light's right there at the end of the tunnel. And when I mean that light, I think federal receivership is what I've been saying all along, and that's what we are trying to avoid, is coming into compliance with this consent decree. So I thank you for that, as well as the Vice Speaker. I had a few questions, and I'm not going to, you know, I'm not the number cruncher in the legislature. Obviously, Senator S. Nicholas does a very good job at that, but I want to do some basic math here, and then maybe I can get some information from the Director, and then I'll follow up with some questions. What, how long have you been with the agency? How long, how long have you been with the Department of Corrections?
I've been there for four years now.
Four years. In the last four years, what has your budget been? From year one to current?
The budget has been nineteen million to twenty-five million.
First, okay, so your first year is nineteen million?
That's correct.
Second year?
Yeah, it's on about, on or about twenty, twenty-one.
Twenty-one, third year?
Gradual increase.
Third year?
The third year was on or about twenty-three million.
Twenty-three, and then fourth year was about twenty-six?
Twenty-five, twenty-six.
High twenty-five, twenty-six, right?
That's correct.
So twenty-six, nineteen, so seven million dollars. So it's safe to say that each year that you come to us for your request of a budget, you've increased pretty much at a rate of two to three million dollars a year, correct?
That's safe to say, that's correct.
I mean, that's with the numbers that you gave me?
Yes.
And we're, so that's, and we have 1.6 million dollars. Now, this consent decree is going to cost us about 1.6 million dollars for the lock-in mechanisms? And I see on line two, page two, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one, I'm looking at your bill. On page two, your, General, your carryover, section two, your carryover balance is approximately 700,000 dollars?
Yes, sir.
Okay, 700,000. Are there any more incurrences that in the next nine months we're going to have to come compliant with, to spend, to get out of the consent decree?
The medical working group has yet to give us a dollar figure, and that is going to... to incorporate, how many more personnel are needed? Nurses, perhaps a part-time, full-time pharmacist, perhaps dental, the medications. We have about a thirty, no, about a $25,000 renovation cost to the infirmary there, which Mr. Munya is going to do in-house. DPW will do that all in-house. So these little added factors with regard to the medical plan are starting to build up. I'm really interested in knowing how much the electronic health record system, including computers, we need computers, we need faxes, so little by little, that's going to add up. The only hard figures we have are 25,000 for in-house to renovate the infirmity and 1.6 on the locking systems. Does that help?
And then your carryover of 700?
Oh, that 700 is for the experts in the litigation.
But it all goes towards your, your, your backed up?
I won't be tapping into the pool, the law enforcement pool. I don't want to tap into the law enforcement pool.
Okay, thank you. So we don't even have a rough number for the rest of the incurrences that may affect, do we have anything?
Senator, we don't at this point until we can kind of work with the working group.
But are we looking at six figures, seven figures? I mean, is, what is the total number going to be when it comes at the end of the day? How much are we paying to get out of this consent decree black cloud? That's my question.
It'll be premature for me to give you a number at this point, sir.
Okay, well, we only have about eight months, right, left? Okay.
That's correct.
Do you know when we're going to get this number?
I hope real soon. We meet every week.
Okay.
The plan is being developed, and that plan has to be very, very detailed. Do we have something else? One of the things we have in the working group is we have, for example, we'll say the number three is the informed consent, 30-day timeline. What is the policy for informed consent? And I have steps one, two, and three for implementation, and the bottom line here is a big dollar sign. I want to know how much that's going to cost, how much that's going to cost. And I guess it's so much easier to say, we know we need plywood nails and hammers for the facilities. It's been a little bit more difficult, Senator, when we're dealing with a medical health plan. I think experts across the nation could probably look at DOC and answer your question if they were sitting right here. There are experts who run the medical health plan of hundreds of prisons, dozens of prisons, and they could look, oh Guam, you've got a single prison system with about a 280 inmate population, maybe a 400 detainee population. Those kind of experts would be able to give you the figure. I wish we could, but we need that expert help.
Thank you, and that's a segue into my next question. When we talk about the carryover of funds from the Attorney General's office, and we talk about the experts from off-island, are we saying that we don't have the experts on island? And if we don't, is this 700,000 dollars going to be enough? Do we know that halfway through we encumber 700,000 dollars and it's not enough? Where are we going to get the rest of the money from?
No, Senator, I'll tell you, we're not going to go beyond that 700,000. We already have had an RFP. We've had someone locally who has responded to the RFP for clinical psychological expert services, and I have no problem if there are persons on island to do an RFP locally for that. I always want to be able to do it locally. So, no, Senator, I won't be back in front of you asking more than 700,000, no.
Okay, now, but I know you didn't ask for the 700,000. You could probably use the 700,000 elsewhere, but we have, I mean, I'm not going to point fingers or blame anyone, but we have backed ourselves up into this corner that we now have to find monies. And I agree with the former Speaker Rodriguez, is that these monies were earmarked specifically for agencies that dealt with law enforcement, so forth and so on, but we backed ourselves up into a corner that we have to, for lack of a better term, raid these monies and make sure that we now panic punch this consent decree when we've been there for 20, 25 years. And so, you know, I get pushed back and I get screamed at because I say the federal receivership word, but it's a reality, and we don't have time left. We have eight months, and that's it? And we still may end up with the decision by the courts that we, none of us in here want to hear. And so what, I guess my point is, we're spending this money, we're appropriating to the Department of Corrections for the lack of term, and when I say lack of, I'm talking about lack of across the board. Lack of facilities, lack of maintenance, lack of employees, whatever it is, it's a lack of. And that's the reason why we continue to appropriate more and more money each year, and we get nothing in return. We don't get rehabilitation, we don't get a better infrastructure, we're throwing money down a bottomless pit, and the taxpayer is the one who's carrying the burden of this complete cost, and no one's saying anything about it. They're just allowing it to happen. And finally, we're doing something about it, and I think that's a start. But also the start isn't the end, and it's not the product that we just look at this consent decree in nine months, because it's not taken us eight or nine months to get out of a hole that took us 25, 30 years to get into. It's just not going to happen. Yes, we may have that black cloud of federal receivership removed from us, which is the ultimate goal. We have to attack this first and foremost. But our future of the taxpayers' dollar and the rehabilitation, because like I was just talking with Senator Underwood, we want to send these kids to UOG, not DOC. So I think while we're discussing this, this is an opportunity for us to make sure that we are addressing some of these problems. And I know you have a new deputy director, which is my loss, I guess someone else's gain, but someone who can help facilitate those programs. And I think it's very important, when we talk about this, we kind of just be nearsighted and say, hey, listen, the consent decree is no longer a problem, so status quo. I don't believe that, I really don't. I think we have to make sure that in 20 years from now, we don't push this problem to another generation, another branch of government, and another legislature to deal with it in 20 years or 10 years, and we'll be back to the same conversation and the same problems. So part of that problem, Mr. Director, lies with you, and you, I believe, should have a master plan. We all talk about master plans or strategic plans, whatever plan, but I think yourself, Mr. Director, with all due respect, are going to have to come up with a strategic plan to move your department forward to make sure that when these guys get out of prison, or girls, they're productive members of society. And so I think that's very important. We have to look to the future, not just getting out of the consent decree. That's the most important part. But the future of our island and our safety lies with the two of you right now, and I think we have to take that very seriously. And if you do, I know it was said earlier in this hall, that the consent decree does not address a new prison, it does not address infrastructure, and I'm well aware of that. But you're the expert, you're the one that is there every single day for the last four years. If you need a new prison, if you believe that is what you need, then you have to make sure that is clear to this body. And if you don't need a new prison, then you make sure that's clear too. But you're the expert, not us. We want to hear from you. And I'm not asking you to say we need a new prison, I'm asking you to tell us what you want. And right now, what I'm seeing is you want more money every single year because there's a lack of at the Department of Corrections. So thank you for the time, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate you allowing me to speak.
Thank you very much, Senator McCready, and just for your information, Vice Speaker Cruz is a member of the Blue Ribbon Commission that has been formed by the Chief Executive, and that's one of the major responsibilities that that particular commission is tasked with, is, and I think the biggest question is delineating whether in fact Department of Corrections is going to be a facility to, for detention purposes or for correction purposes, and that ultimately, that recommendation and the strategic plan will be formulated by Vice Speaker Cruz, Lieutenant Governor, as well as all the members of the Blue Ribbon Commission. So I just wanted to add that particular comment. We do have Speaker Wapat?
May I just respond?
Ms. Bohr?
Yes. Just for, I guess, for the knowledge for the body here is that, yes, we have prioritized the needs of the facility, and the priorities now are in meeting the mandates of the consent decree, but thankfully with, once the working groups have terminated, once we've met the deadlines in September, the Blue Ribbon Commission will continue to work on what we are coining our strategic master plan for the facility. So it will not stop come September 30th. We will push forward and we will bring the prison where it needs to be back to a correctional facility. So we are still working on that. That is secondary, it's kind of running parallel to our, to meeting our mandates on the consent decree.
Thank you, Ms. Bohr, General Barrett Anderson.
Chairman, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
Uh, go ahead.
I was gone, did you just say that you've addressed a new facility, is that what?
No, sir. What I was indicating was that we have prioritized the needs of the facility of our, of the Department of Corrections, and right now we need to meet the needs of the mandate, but what you had indicated, sir, the master plan is what we are also working on, working on parallel to meeting the mandates of the consent decree.
So there's two things going on at once, basically?
Yes, sir, and the Blue Ribbon Commission is helping us push forward in trying to create that strategic master plan as we meet the needs of the consent decree.
And that falls in line with the executive order that the Governor had signed about three weeks ago?
Yes.
Mandating this, okay. Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bohr, and Senator McCready, General Barrett Anderson.
Yeah, I also want to mention that the Director and I have written to the National Institute of Corrections. That letter went off about a week and a half ago, and we invite them in the month of June, I know it's a short time for them, at their expense, the National Institute of Corrections, they do have grant money, in order to come out here and to facilitate with all stakeholders the development of that strategic plan, because Senator McCready, we can go back in front of Judge Munson, and he's going to say, well, what happens after September 30th? The blueprint, the master plan, the strategic plan, has to be something that you show the judge, that it won't just stop on September 30th.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, but that was my exact question, that's what I was getting to. Is, one last question because she brought it up. Does it cost the government of Guam any money, or the taxpayers of Guam any money, to bring out the national?
NIC?
The NIC, yes. Will it cost us money to get that strategic plan moving forward?
I'm waiting to hear from them. I'm hoping it'll cost us zero.
Okay, but you're not sure?
Not yet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Speaker Wapat, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Fred, you had mentioned earlier that you're going to be working, of course, on the four units first, on the locking system, but you said that closely tied to that would be the closed circuit monitors, and right now it's listed as an option, but do you have a dollar amount for that specifically?
Yeah, I was going to say Mr. Munya.
Oh, okay, so we'll wait for him to come.
He's right here.
Yes, please.
If I can take a five-minute recess, because he has to be sworn in and we're still waiting for Claudia Akvaji on the issue with regards to procurement.
Okay, sure.
Take a five-minute recess, the committee will convene thereafter. The committee will convene thereafter. The whole, with the committee on appropriations and adjudication is now reconvened. I, we just invited three additional representatives, the deputy director of DPW, as well as one of the critical managers, if not executives, within DPW, and inclusive of GSA representatives. They have been sworn by the Sergeant Arms, or they have been sworn in. So I'm going to ask them to just identify themselves for the record, and then we will proceed with Madam Speaker having the first line of questions, and then Vice Speaker Cruz.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Earlier, oh, I'm so sorry. I didn't hear you.
My name is Felix Beneventi. I'm deputy director, Department of Public Works.
Felix Beneventi, deputy director, Department of Public Works.
Dominic Munia, maintenance manager for Public Works.
Claudia Foggie, chief procurement officer, General Services Agency.
Thank you again, everyone, and welcome. Madam Speaker, I'm sorry, you have the floor.
Thank you for the third time. Earlier, I guess we were waiting for you, Dominic, because they questioned that, I mean, a statement that was made by, by Fred, that, you know, the four units locking system that, right now is being estimated at one, 1.6 million dollars, that there, the closed circuit monitors were also important to have. However, for now, at least, it is listed as an option. And, you know, earlier, several of our colleagues have indicated that we're, we're not really seeing a lot of numbers, and the, the general here had given us some numbers, but the other working groups, of course, have not already tallied the, the total amount. And of course, one member's, several of the members are concerned that it's like we're giving a blank check, so to speak. And, and we have a tendency, as a government, that when it's a blank check, then we, we're just, we're going to keep racking up, you know, the bill. And then another member is concerned that if we're going to be doing this, then do we just kind of stop and then either build a new one, or go up, or, or what have you? So the, my question was then, do you have an idea in terms of the cost for these circuit monitors? And then after, and do, and have you kind of made a list of priorities that, when, if monies are available, then you go down to the next list, and then down, and, and how far are you going to go down? Because, for one thing, is that, you know, we don't even know what the, the ceiling would be then to, and in the cost to comply with the court order.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. To answer your question, what we did several months ago at DPW was we put out a, a bid for a design-built concept for the locking system, and also to include the CCTVs, to include the entire compound up in Mingilau, and also Agania. However, the estimates that came in, we had two proposals come to the table, and the high proposal came in a little bit over 3 million dollars. So, not having the funding for that project, the director of both DPW and DOC decided to cancel that contract. And now to comply with the court order, our new direction that we've been asked from DOC is to just concentrate on 5, 6, 7, and 17. The first proposal that came in at the 3 million dollar, came in as a lump sum proposal. It didn't break down individual units. So the 1.6 million dollar figure that we're throwing out here today is an estimate based on what we at DPW could put our best estimate to. So that's the number that we have right now, for 5, 6, 7, and 17, only to include locking systems, not to include CCTV.
Okay. Whereas the...
And no Agania.
You're right. And, and whereas the 3 million was all of the locking system, not just the four, the entire unit?
That's correct. Mingilau and Agania.
You're right. And Mingilau and Agania.
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you. Oh, that's the closed circuit, yeah, monitoring. General, then, I know that there are several questions back and forth all the time about, on, you know, page two, which, of course, saying that you must review and concur in writing. But, so my question is, and trying to, I guess, be comfortable with it, is that it would be you, wouldn't it, for the government of Guam, that would have to appear before the district court judge?
Yes.
Okay, then, and so, and you're, you're doing this on behalf of DOC as your client, and also as the attorney general for the government of Guam?
Yes.
So then, in essence, you would be the best person to review the expenditures, or the, for the transfer of the monies, to indicate where they really are to comply with the court order?
Thank you, Senator, yes.
Okay. And that, that's why I wanted to, to really make that clear. Can you, you tell me, who can, that, in the office, basically, that would be during the procurement, to determine, I mean, or how would you do this, to determine what is the least expensive medication? I, I know you had mentioned that earlier, indicating where there may be, that language should be considered in the bill. But how is the question? Maybe Claudia might be able to assist, to, to assist us, because there is several sections here, it talks about sole sourcing in page three. And, and although we're vindicated in, in section, let me see, section four, that we want the total cost, of course, of it not being more than, I guess, 20% less. So whether that language or any other language, how will you be able then to go out and handle that procurement as a sole source to get the least expensive medication, but it's still, of course, we're not saying less, of lesser quality, but just the cost of it? So how, how would that be, be handled by the government?
Actually, Madam Speaker, the, we, when we, when I discussed this with Fred and Shehera, it's focusing on the Perry Point. Perry Point, once upon a time, is, of course, is a manufacturer of medications, and they actually provide the cheapest, based on our study, or our research, in medications to the government of Guam back then. But Perry Point, a little history, is Perry Point stopped doing business with the government of Guam because of non-payment. So to assist behavioral health, what we did not too long ago is we established like a line of credit with Perry Point in order for the government to benefit on the cheaper rates as relates to medication. With Perry Point, they wanted an assurance that, you know, they will get their monies on time, and not be left with a non-payment issue for six or seven months down the line. So we are actually, and there is a statute that authorizes us to go direct to the manufacturer in purchasing generic drugs. So that's actually how we, I discussed this with Fred, and that's how the language came about. I've kind of communicated with Fred about Perry Point. And, you know, so we've used Perry Point in the past, and it's just because of non-payment issues that they don't want to deal with the government of Guam. But we can benefit on those discounts if we should assure them payment will be handled in a, you know, faster manner.
So one of the, the, somebody had mentioned this, I'm not sure, also, that maybe to be able to meet that particular section of the bill, that, oh, no, right here, I guess, it's that it would be through, of course, the Guam Memorial Hospital. But if you, right now, we're having some diff, GMH is having some difficulty, of course, in making its payment, and they no longer want to work with GMH. How then can we get these, GMH, public health, mental health, and now DOC, to be able to get these formularies, and to get them in bulk? So then, again, they could be cheaper if, let's say, they don't want to work with GMH?
I believe if we establish, like I mentioned earlier, the line of credit, and what, what happens with the line of credit is, of course, there's so much amount of money, like, let's say, 100,000 in the account, and as they deliver the meds, or whenever the department receives the medications, and a receiving report is sent to the manufacturer, that they receive the product, the payment is a drawdown from the bank. So it assures them that the money is available as soon as the, the government of Guam receives the meds.
And Madam Speaker, if I may, this section...
Fred?
Oh, sorry. Madam Speaker, if I may also, I'm sorry, I don't know the section of law that, that Claudia just spoke about that authorizes. Department of Corrections is not one of the authorized agencies to buy directly from distributors. And so the important language here is Department of Corrections is added. So if GMH has a problem, no problem, because this is now a different agency that's doing the purchasing.
Earlier, also, Madam General, you had mentioned that the 700,000 dollars, which will be carried over to use to hire experts, what type of experts or consultants then would you be actually looking for?
We're looking for experts who have experience in developing prison medical plans, specifically as outlined in the order. We're looking at medical plans, and, and the Department of Corrections is responsible for developing the plan. Make no mistake about it. I'm not looking to hire someone to make the plan. The plan has to be developed by the Department of Corrections. The plan to include infectious control, infirmary operations, psychotropic medication, pharmaceutical operations, emergency services, sick call, suicide prevention, intoxication withdrawal, just everything. So that I can have an expert to review whether or not the plan that my client is developing is a plan that is consistent with the standards as established by the National Commission on Correctional Health Care, and that we are going in the right direction. I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean that. I just meant...
It's okay.
The right way.
It's, it's done.
Okay.
We understand.
Getting back to the subject here, that we are, to have the experts just do a review of all our policies and procedures, the plan that's put together, that incorporates personnel, that incorporates an electronic health record system, and is this going to work? So I, I don't expect to hire experts that will be with us very, very long. But Senator, I, I, I feel that as, as the litigator and representing the government, I, I need that neutral eye, that neutral viewpoint, that can assist me in helping my client pursue completion of the court order in the best and proper way.
Well, and, and thank you for answering that, because I know that earlier it said that you can't use it to hire legal, you know, and expert, I mean, professionals, but, but it's more in line of medical, that, that we're looking at, medical experts, but for those who've worked in, in the, in the prison. So I, I, I thank you very much for, for clarifying that. So, and the other individuals now that you're pulling to assist, have been providing some assistance, like, for example, you mentioned at UOG with their mechanical engineer, is, will there be a cost to that later on, too? Or is there something just...
No. The beauty of the working group, it's all pro bono.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you very much. That, that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Speaker Wapat. Vice Speaker Cruz, any other senators have questions they would like to pose? Okay, we're going to go ahead, and Vice Speaker Cruz is yielding to others in the hall. Senator Espada, Senator Tony Ada, Senator Frank Blas, Senator McCready, and Senator Tom Ada. Senator Espada, you got the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question really evolves around, I, I know everybody's taking a look at this piece of legislation right now, is pretty familiar with it, right? And of course, we've identified, or the, the good author of the vice speaker has identified a funding source to help the process to meet the order, the court order. I guess the question to me, in my mind, at this point, just for my own clarification, is that, okay, we know what the fixed costs are in terms of the locking system, because those are physical aspects that we can put a cost to. In terms of something like medications, that would have to also, which is part of the order, making sure that we supply it, I, I would imagine that the initial purchase to, to supply the facility, the medical facility that's going to be up there, would come from this pot. However, going forward past that, right, the question, I'm not sure who to address it to, it might be you, Mr. Director, or maybe Madam AG, of your understanding, working with your committees, what happens then? Once we fully stock this infirmary, or whatever it's going to be, right, then what? Right? Is the money still going to be coming from the same pot? Or, I mean, what is your understanding of, of this? Or would, would it be more of a budgetary issue going forward?
Senator, Madam, if I may, Senator, thank you for, for that question. That's definitely a valid question. I, I could tell you that we're exploring every avenue best for us to not come back and continue this discussion. We want to move forward with solution, and I'll tell you, some of the solutions that we've been looking at is having our own pharmacists up at the Department of Corrections, based on the population there. The advantage that public health, behavioral health, and GMH has over DOC is that they do have a pharmacist, they do have a pharmacy. So our concept, long-term and very near-term, is actually look at that possibility of employing our own pharmacists, even if it's part-time, and also a pharmacist technician, two of them at least, to be able to manage our medication process and handling there at DOC. So to answer your question, no, we don't, we do not want to come back and utilize the same pot. It's going to be a budgetary type thing, and what's unique about it is because we are going through a, a vendor, through a contract, the disadvantage is this particular vendor, by experience by other professionals in the government, is that they could jack up their price, like the Madam AG had mentioned earlier, skyrocket. And what we have been convinced for the past couple of weeks is, the only way that you could get a good deal out of all these medications is to have your own pharmacists in place, which is what we're trying to do, emulate what GMH and public health and behavioral health has. And so definitely, that should decrease the amount of funding we need, because now we're getting the cost of medication at a, at a better deal, and not to one vendor whom said what we're, we're it, and we could jack up the price whenever we feel like. And I hope that answers your question.
It does, but not totally. And again, it just comes back to the point that, you know, I, and I appreciate your answer, that once we get...
Can I offer a point of information?
I'm sorry?
Vice Speaker Cruz, you may state your point of information.
Please. What we're trying to do in this bill is for this court order, in this fiscal year, to be able to allow DOC, because in their budget, we didn't provide all the money that they're going to need for their pharmacy. We want them to stock their pharmacy to comply with the court order. But for the succeeding fiscal years, DOC is going to have to ask for whatever it is that they need to be able to continue to keep that pharmacy stocked. Currently, the vacancy pool for public safety is not just uniforms. DOC has a forensic unit up there that needs additional nurses, psychiatrists, psychologists, whatever. The vacancy pool was designed to be able to do whatever was necessary to comply with the public safety within this community. And so the hiring of all the professionals, the proposed hiring of the psychologist, the additional nurse that Dr. Saad wants, the additional whatever personnel, the, the vacancy pool already gives the, the governor the authority to be able to do that. The only thing this bill is doing... The only thing this bill is doing is saying, besides the personnel cost, the additional cost for this court order, which were not anticipated when we wrote the budget last year, will be paid from the vacancy pool for this fiscal year. But for any subsequent year, we will have to budget each one of those separately, and they're gonna have to come to us for it.
Thank you, Vice Speaker Cruz, for your point of information. Senator Espada, you stay at the floor.
And I really appreciate that information from the author of this bill, just so that we're all on the same page, you know, especially on the panel ahead. And that's why, Mr. Director, it did answer it, but it, you know, you did answer part of my question, but you didn't answer in totality, and that was really the missing part. But at least now you and I together understand what the intent of this particular bill is. I appreciate this, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Madam General.
And if I can add, as the medical group continues to work, the clarity will be there. The stock of medications, and this is non-psychotropic medications, it's, you know, the bears, the bear aspirins, et cetera. The issue of pharmacy, do we need to add DOC to a pharmacy statute that, they don't have authorization right now? So we need to come down. And the clarity will piece by piece come forward. So that, for example, psychotropic medication, the director does not want to have those kinds of medications there. Boom, that's clear. Guam Behavior was the repository for those psychotropic medications. They're under receivership. They can get medication like that. So the clarity will be there so that the senators and the lawmakers can see exactly how much pressure this order is placing on this pool, on this pool. As we sit here today, the dollar figure we can identify very clearly is for the facilities. If you would like us to let you know in 30 days where are we with regards to the medical plan, please, I invite your staff to please come every Monday at 4:00 PM. And those issues will help you understand what pressure this is placing on the pool if this law passes.
And I appreciate that also. Thank you, Madam General. Thank you. Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Espada. Senator Tony Ada, you recognize, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Miss, you know, I'm looking over the bill here, and we're looking at the appropriations coming from the public safety vacancy pool. And I see that we have the authority and the authorization outlined in different sections for GSA permitted to procure medicine, the AG permitted to procure services for witnesses or consultants. I'm just wondering, do we need to include another section in here for the authorization to procure the locking mechanisms? Being that this is coming from the vacancy pool and that the vacancy pool is only for positions and not for anything else, do we need to include a provision in here?
Senator Tony Ada, if you can use the Vice Speaker Cruz.
That is exactly what is on the first page, the additional authorization. This amends the budget bill and provides for another authorization. In the budget bill, the first two sections in, provided for the use for O1, we're now providing additional authorization here, and for the specific purpose of whatever it is that is necessary to comply with this court order. If it means locking systems, if it means tiles for the infirmary, if it means medication, then we're authorizing it from this.
Okay.
My colleagues, all I'm trying to do with this is, they're meeting every Monday and Friday. If we want, we can also meet as a legislature every Tuesday and every Saturday to authorize every single expenditure that they want. The thing is, is that, yes, as I'm telling you, I'm the one that's the least willing to give a carte blanche check to this administration. But I'm telling you, I'm not going, I don't think any of us want to be here twice a week to appropriate tomorrow for medication, next Tuesday for tiles, next two, the following Wednesday for something else. I think all of us understand, they're all working, I've never seen a group work as well as they have with the lieutenant governor, every single meeting, with the general, every single meeting, and all the directors coming and putting in their suggestions on how to be able to deal with it. And some of it is like, as the general mentioned, Linda DeNorsy said she can let us use her electronic health records, but she specifically told the general, you, I cannot purchase drugs for you, because that's contrary to the mandate that she was given. But everybody's there, and they've all been given marching orders, and the governor looks at every single director and says, you give us Dominic, Dominic's gonna be there, you give us Linda, Linda's every there, you know? And I go to those meetings, and it's wonderful to watch, but the thing is, is I'm trying to spare us having to be here for every single appropriation. But we can do that if that's what we want. I'm just saying, I'm trusting, and let me tell you, it's hard for me, I'm trusting two people to co-sign and say, this is for this court order, let's do it, let's purchase it, let's go. And otherwise, we'd have to be trying to figure out where are we going to get that money? And the only place that I know, and we did when we were going through the budget last year, was the $6 million, we just said, you know, we're not gonna give it to anyone, we'll just put it in this pool, and whoever needs it can tap from it. And all I'm suggesting in this piece of legislation is, besides personnel, we're gonna need to find cash to be able to meet their formulary needs, their additional amounts that they need for the locking system. And there's $6 million that started out in there, and not much of it has been used. Let's use this for the specific purpose of addressing this, so we don't have to meet that train at the end of the tunnel of having to build a whole new prison, because we've not complied with the court order.
Thank you, Chairman Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, Senator Tony Ada, you stay at the floor.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'm glad that the vice speaker has enlightened us in that we give them the tools that they need to follow on with the court order. And that's the only question I have. I just wanted to make sure that we don't find ourselves back here again needing to give additional authorizations or anything like that, and that they do have the entire authorization in this one bill.
Thank you very much, Senator Tony Ada.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Senator Frank Blas Jr., and then Senator McCready, and Senator Tom Adam. Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I think along the lines of the question and the concern from Senator Ada, have we, have you come up, and granted, and I appreciate that this is a continued work in progress, but to this point, have we tallied what our cost, if today will be, is at today, to be able to comply with the court order?
Senator, for the locking system and is 1.6, to renovate the infirmary, to bring it to standard, is $25,000, I believe. DPW's gonna handle that. There is a nurse that needs to be hired. The director can respond how much that nurse is going to cost. Mr. Director, what else today?
The nurse would cost $61,000, and that's a registered staff nurse, too, one, for the mandate. That's including benefit, ASO? That's excluding benefit, Madam. Excluding benefit. That's all as far as cost, Madam, at this point.
At the point, yeah. And I appreciate, and I recognize, it continues to be a work in progress here. Now, Mr. Director, you know, you did mention that, long-term, short-term, what's one of the things that you desire, and maybe there's continued discussions within the working group, is of course the pharmacists and the pharm tech. Of course, you need a registered nurse. Are there, do you anticipate, or at this point, any new positions?
And to answer your question, Senator, yes, we do. We are considering an additional position for another records keeper. I am looking at also possibly the need to bring on medical assistants, two of that. But again, until the doctor can provide me more guidance with regards to the medical plan, then we can better give you the best answer and cost.
Okay. And then I guess, going through that, and I, you know, the, looking at some of the reporting requirements, can I ask then, that maybe, that as part of that reporting requirement, as a suggestion, and maybe that we can bring this up, you know, I understand, and as far as the amendments and stuff, again, like the speaker says, is continued work in progress. We can't, because of that, I recognize, can't hold you to what you're saying today, that that's all, because Dominic, you know, 1.6 million, then he comes back at 1.8, I don't wanna say, but Dominic, you said it was 1.6. Don't worry, you didn't say it, he did, okay? You're good, Primo. Is that, as that goes along, and as you start to identify things that you're going to probably need in, you know, fiscal, the next fiscal year forward, outside of the authorizations that you're gonna be given, you know, with this, with this bill, it gives this body at least enough heads up as we move through the budget process to start to recognize those needs. As well, Madam General, I see that, you know, as you procure the experts, you know, and those individuals, it may come across at the time, and that you may see that there's a value to keeping these individuals probably on board on a full-time basis, you know? Again, it's for planning purposes as we move forward. Just a suggestion, I don't know whether, I'd like to be able to put that in as far as an amendment as a reporting requirement, or that could be just something that the committee can do on its own to include into the reporting requirement to the legislature.
The report to the federal judge can be made available to all the senators, and we want that report to be as comprehensive as possible. So if you, that does, we are required to give you, I believe here, a copy of that. If not, we'll give it to you.
Yeah, but again, the other areas that, and I don't know how comprehensive it'd be to include also the suggestions of, you know, the other positions that may, you know, as a result of sidebar, you know, discussions in this. Again, it's trying to get the best bang for the buck. You've got, you know, the committee that's there together. The next time you'll probably get something like this together, may not, Haley's comment will probably pass by twice. Okay? So I'm asking to take advantage of that, full advantage of that committee that you've got in front of you, and, you know, and look at all aspects of this. Because, which leads to my next one, my last question is, of the 35 points identified in this order, are we confident that what we're providing today or by September will be able to hit all points?
I'm absolutely confident with regard to the locking system and the facilities.
Right.
Because DPW and the staff there has done a marvelous job. We are still awaiting from Dr. Saad his development of the plan. And as I said, the clock started ticking just Monday.
Mm-hmm.
So we're well ahead of ourselves. And we meet every Monday. Dr. Saad has been given the direction to develop that plan. And I'm hoping that the plan that he puts together along with Dr. Timinglow is a good plan. To what extent can we fund this entire plan? Well, then the committee is going to have, the working group will have to be able to say how much we can do currently under the order, and how much of the plan really is outside the order. And if it's outside the order, then it goes into another budget, a strategic plan, et cetera. And that's why we're looking at a strategic plan around June. Because as, when the plan is there, you're gonna see what fits the order, and what fits a strategic plan, and what fits a blue ribbon commission, and what fits your consideration overall.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you. One more question, just allow me a little bit of latitude on this next question, actually, is how much of this discussion are you having or involvement with DYA? How much in, is, how much of involvement in the discussions that you're having with through this issue is DYA involved?
None. None. A DYA is not part of the order.
I understand. But looking forward and looking, you know, I mean, you know, we talk in the education side, you know, your feeder systems, okay?
In answer, none right now.
Just a little suggestion. Thank you very much.
Good suggestion.
Thank you very much, Senator Blas. Ms. Bora? She has a follow-on response to Senator Blas's inquiry.
Senator Blas, I have been in discussions with the director of DYA. He understands that the priorities that we are going through right now are for the consent decree, but as we move forward in our strategic master plan, if any of our outreach and prevention programs can also benefit the youth at Department of Youth Affairs, then we will incorporate our programs together.
Yeah, and I think that part of your master plan, you recognize, okay, what's coming up on your horizon?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay? And maybe some of those ways that we can, you know, it goes back to, you know, maybe they don't need to go down that route.
Mr. Chairman, can I offer a point of information, and just a follow-up to this suggestion by our good colleague here? I submit that you never, ever should include DYA in anything that DOC is doing. DYA is not a junior or a mini Department of Corrections, and I hate for this government to ever go down that road where you start incorporating your programs to see how it could benefit the Department of Youth Affairs. Those are two separate entities, and the position to which this government should be taking with respect to the Department of Youth Affairs is that they're rehabilitation and not incarceration. And that was the struggle that we had when I was appointed to that department, and I worked really hard with then General Barrett Anderson, who was then a judge in the family courts, who really supported that kind of thinking and that kind of philosophy back then.
No, and I appreciate.
You're coming from your police officer perspective.
I understand. And you know, of all due respect.
Thank you, Senator Blas.
So DYA is nothing to do with DOC.
And I don't wanna infer that.
And don't include them.
Thank you, Senator.
I don't wanna infer that. I don't wanna infer that DYA and DOC, okay?
Yes, Senator, we're not, we're not putting the programs together, we're not trying to merge them, but if at any point, if we receive any additional grant funding, anything that could benefit DYA separately, but along the same lines as rehabilitation of adults and rehabilitation of youth, separate, but they're still, they still kind of co-mingle, we have basically the same mission, but we will keep them.
But they can't be co-mingled, because even, even the federal grants that DYA gets from OJDDP, they're required a separation from the adult population, and so.
But we are in, we are, have been in discussions with.
Ms. Bora, we're gonna conclude the conversation on that particular issue.
Yeah.
Senator Barnes has a follow-up, and then Senator McCready. Thank you, Senator Blas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just based on the information that was provided by the chief, Chief Sinagustine, I just wanna ask, based on the positions and the requirement that is needed for this court order, for the sustainability, because this, if this bill passes, the authorization to fill the positions needed, the upcoming budget for 2016 is right around the corner. Have those positions already been included, the requests as needed?
No, Madam.
And why not?
And if I may, I'll add on to that, that two more additional nurses, again, this is just recommendation coming from Mr. Saad, that at this point, we have four nurses on board which are classified. The court ordered an additional one, which makes it five. Dr. Saad, Mr. Saad insisted that we need seven, including two medical assistants. I did inform the good old vice speaker that we, as we're move forward, we move forward with what's taking place, the possibility of a supplemental budget once a plan has been produced, and the commission concurs with it. At the same time, we're hoping that the two consultants that the good old Madam AG is communicating with arrives in time to assist us to better say, yes, that's a realistic staffing or not. They might come and say, you need more, based on what's happening right now, you're way behind on many of your medical needs, you're gonna need 10. But what we wanna caution, and I'll say this for the record, we wanna, I always wanna be physically responsible. When I say physically. When I say physically responsible, I want to make sure that the amount of manpower I have and the amount of budget that is able to be provided to me is realistic. I don't want to keep bringing manpower onboard and then end up knowing that within a year I do not need that manpower. That's very, very crucial. So that's why it's critical that the master plan, the strategic plan, and the medical plan be produced, so that will be the basis that will then defend me to say, "This is the reason why we're bringing them onboard for this reason." We want to run 24-hour service, we want to be able to have a nurse deployed doing this and whatnot, so I hope that answers.
Thank you, Mr. Sanogstein. Thank you, Senator Barnes. Senator McCready, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I have just two questions, one for DPW, and then Madam General. Back to Section 2 of the bill on the carryover portion, I just wanted to be clear that the $700,000, when I asked you earlier, you were pretty confident that you wouldn't, you wouldn't encumber the $700,000 for these experts. So my next question would be, because we already put a, in last year's budget, we put a provision in there in miscellaneous appropriations, I believe, that gave the Governor the authorization to use the prior year, or to pay prior year obligations, so we don't have to authorize it anymore. Would it be safe to say that we could use a provision that says up to $700,000, and then anything that's not encumbered, we could then use that money to pay for prior year obligations?
Prior obligations of, I think that would be absolutely appropriate. We have a single vendor on one of our RFPs that have gone out, we'd like to contract that for about a year. If by September 30th, we don't need the consultant, that's fine, we'd just like to be safe. If we don't need another consultant, you want to know what to do with the rest of the money, Senator, that's up to this body here.
So you wouldn't have a problem with just using the term up to 700, whatever's not encumbered?
Goes to...
It's not going to hurt your ability to procure this, these people? The reason why I ask that is because it seemed that the $700,000 was way more than enough to spend on Section 2, so I'm just saying...
So up to is fine, Senator.
Up to is fine, thank you. Okay. And one question?
Just a second. Vice Speaker Cruz, you have a point of information?
Well, yes. The General was very generous in coming forward and admitting that she had a $700,000 carryover, and that in hiring the litigation experts that she needed, she did not want to tap into the public safety pool to hire those people. The General also had been in discussions with me that she would like to use that $700,000 for other things at her office, hiring additional attorneys, bringing her IT system into the 21st century, and a couple of other things. But I could not in good conscience give her that carryover authority in this bill. The hearing, public hearing I had was only to meet the needs of the civil order in this case. If she doesn't spend the $700,000, then I'm hoping she comes back to me and asks, "Can I get a new IT system? Can I get more attorneys so that I can be more efficient?" And then we will bring that back to you. I'm hoping that she doesn't use the 700, I'm sure she barely spent a third of that and the experts, if not less, and then we can provide her with the authority in a separate bill to pay for her IT system that she wants, and for any additional attorneys or whatever else she needs to improve her office operations.
And I thank the Vice Speaker, and I absolutely accept his restriction, that the focus of this bill is for the consent decree, and that's why I'm not here asking for anything else. If there is a balance from the 700 carryover, I'd like to work with the Speaker if, but it's something I'm not asking for at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. Last question for DPW. Before you guys came in to the committee as a whole, my question was to the panel, have we identified a ceiling and a floor as to what we're going to spend, and to what you guys are going to ask, what your responsibility is in the role of helping the Department of Corrections avoid the consent decree nine-month time limit? So have you identified each aspect of what your responsibility is, and if so, what's the estimated cost?
Right now, our role is for the procurement process for the locking system and for the renovation of the infirmary. Right now, the Attorney General has mentioned 1.6 for the locking system, that's our estimate, and roughly between 25 and 30,000 for the renovation of four rooms in the infirmary. That's our involvement at this point.
And does that renovation include the electrical and everything that's included?
That's based on the scope of work that DOC provided to DPW.
Because I think I heard someone on the panel say something about the electrical system, that you guys would be responsible for that.
The locking system will require electrical infrastructure, so that is incorporated in the design process that we're using as our procurement.
And are there any other types? I know, Madam General, you had spoke about the word renovation, which sounds like a less expensive word. Is there any responsibility for you guys to address those renovations? Is the Governor, or the government going to tap you guys to take care of minor renovations?
At this point, that's what it is.
That's the first, and it's growing.
It's growing, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator McCready. Senator Mary Torres, you have the floor.
He's older, I yield.
Senator Mary Torres, you have the floor.
My question is very clear, is very simple. We're talking about what costs are going to be, but I'm working backwards, I'm trying to understand what the available funds are remaining in the public safety vacancy pool account, cost account. Do we have an assessment of what the available funds are remaining?
The appropriation was 6.3 million. I've asked for a report, and under the budget law, every twentieth of the month, they were supposed to have submitted a report. I have not received a report yet in four months, so I don't know. When I called them today, they think they've hired three people. I don't know that. My staff has gone through and thinks that they may have spent up to a million, or at least they've transferred a million, but they haven't notified us as to what it was used for. So we have at least $5 million that's there, if that will provide any comfort to any of you.
Yeah, I just, I just bring up the question because we can go through this exercise, but if the resources are not there to meet this very thorough and proactive approach, then, you know, it's all for naught.
Vice Speaker Cruz.
I think the 5 million that's remaining in the fund, or at least that we've, we think at the outside it's 5 million. The front office thinks it's, they barely spent any money, but I'll take it at my 5 rather than their 6, so that at least I know that we have enough money.
Thank you, Vice Speaker Cruz, and also the funding source, Senator Torres, just FYI, was a funding source that was identified and recommended to the Vice Speaker for consideration by the Lieutenant Governor. Senator Tom Adah, I apologize, you're recognized.
You made the right decision, but, you know, I really been intently listening and trying to follow along and all that, I must have blinked and I must have missed something, but who's taken the lead in this whole effort? Is it the Attorney General? Because the only thing that I read here is in Section 1 about the AG must review and concur in writing any transfers of the monies. So does that make you the leader of the pack?
It's myself and the Lieutenant Governor.
Okay, all right, so I'm clear on that now. Now, earlier, you made mention about this part here about, excuse me, about hiring experts, but that this expert consultants that are to be brought in, you know, it's not to come in and write the programs that are needed up at DOC or whatever, but instead to be kind of like that third party that stands back and says, "Mm-hmm, that's good. No, that's weak." And so if, I'm just concerned that, you know, somebody like DOC is struggling on a day-to-day basis with their limited resources to carry on their daily functions, and then now we're going to put on top of them, you know, these requirements to come up with the programs and the policies and whatnot, and so then it's going to be another additional, you know, balancing act in running the prison versus coming up with all these administrative requirements. So I'm just, I'm just trying to understand, maybe we should just procure that expertise to come in there, get it done, and put it in place, and then we march on from there. So I don't know, maybe I could share your thoughts on that.
Mr. Vice Speaker, did you want to?
DOC already has a doctor, and it has a psychiatrist, I mean, a psychologist onboard, and they have been, over the last year and a half, under the Director's guidance, been writing the plan. It's like 90% there, unfortunately, it hasn't been adopted, but they have huge binders full of SOPs that they've been working on, and we're now going to approve it. What the General did not want to do, as you say, DOC is cash-strapped, she did not want to use the vacancy pool to assist her. In litigation, attorneys hire experts to assist them, and all the General is suggesting is that she be authorized to use her carryover from the previous fiscal year to find the litigation experts that will help her. Attorneys are known to hire experts to be able to look at the witnesses and be able to tell you, "This one's not going to go with you." They hire all kinds of different experts in preparation for litigation, and all she wants is, because both she and I admit we don't know formulary from formula, we don't know psychology from psychiatry, these are the things that need to be done, and if the doctor says he wants an additional nurse, if a person that's been in the system says it's not necessary, then at least she can come back and say, "Is it really necessary?" But I'm hoping at the end of this, that in the next budget, the forensic staff will include a psychi, I mean, a pharmacist, and it'll include additional nurses, which I've been trying to get them all to onboard, and so it will be, it's a work in progress. These administrative rules, they've had to have written this for the last 25 years. That's why we're now here in the last 270 days, and the government, and the court is saying, "We've waited for these SOPs for the last 25 years, get it to me, and get it to me within 200, within 30 days, or 60, or 180 days." And it's not any additional burden, it's just, there should have been an SOP up there on how to handle this, how to get informed consent, how to be able to get, how to deal with suicide. All of these things should have already been done. Unfortunately, they've been writing it, they've not adopted it yet, and this is going to force us to look at what has been prepared by the Director and his doctor and his psychologist, and get it approved, so that the General can present it to the court and say, "They've been working on it, this is what it is. I'm hoping that you will accept it, Your Honor, but," because my experts have looked at it, and they also agree, "this is the best SOP for meeting medical needs, psychological needs." And we're going to need to be able, as a legislature, to assist the Director in making sure that he gets a sufficient budget. As you know, last year, I jumped all over about asking for an optimal budget. They used to have a dentist on staff, but they lost the contract because he wasn't being paid. Perry Point used to be able to provide for the hospital, but we lost it because we weren't paying on a timely basis. We're going to have to start being more diligent in making timely payments so that we can make sure that we have the best deal possible, and have a good credit rating with everybody so that we can get the best savings possible. And so with the new deputy, I'm...